So I will call our first meeting, or yeah, our first meeting for October to order, and we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Normally, I would ask for the secretary to note the role, but the secretary's not here. But the recording secretary will note the role, please. So, executive session announcements, I don't think we have an executive session to announce. So we'll move on to recognition, presentations, and awards.
At this time, I would like to introduce to Mr. Seiler, our principal at West Pots Grove Elementary, and he will introduce tonight's presentation. Mr. Seiler?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us at West Pots Grove Elementary School this evening. For our presentation, we are very excited to share with you part of our PBIS initiative here at West Pots Grove Elementary School and our Character Counts series that we've been enrolling this year. We've really been focusing our efforts around our district mission of educating and inspiring all students to excel as productive, responsible citizens and lifelong learners. That's something that we want to be sharing and promoting with our students as early as kindergarten, and our PBIS framework is one of the ways that we go about that. PBIS, there, you may have heard some different acronyms over the years. There've been a few changes in that. SWBIS is what had been referred to previously. PBIS is a positive behavioral intervention support framework that we use to teach students expected behaviors, safe, positive, respectful, and responsible is our Falcon Four, and we teach what those behaviors look like in all areas. We also use our PBIS framework to recognize students and reward them for positive behaviors. We have an extensive positive behavior incentive program that we enroll with students. The Falcon Four is the verbiage that we use K-12 across the district. That's something that our team has worked with K-12 in refining and enhancing throughout the summer and really as the year continues. One of our new initiatives with our PBIS through our PBS team here at West Pots Grove this year has been our Character Counts series. We focus on a different character trait each month. We kick the year off with respect, and Dr. Shirk was kind enough to join us and speak to our students about what respect is, what that looks like. We have our character focus for the month of October is responsibility, and Dr. Harney again was very kind in joining us and speaking to our students about what responsibility looks like, and we are excited. We have a few of our board members who will be joining us in November to talk to us about citizenship, which will be our November focus. So we're looking forward to hosting. At each of these monthly assemblies, we recognize some of our students in the building who have really done an outstanding job of demonstrating that character trait of the month in their classrooms and across the school. We have a few of our second grade students who were recognized for their respectful behavior throughout the month of September. I'll ask them to just stand for a moment, please. You'll hear a little bit more from them in just a moment, but that's part of the reason they were selected to join us this morning is really demonstrating our character trait throughout the month of September. At the monthly assembly series introducing our October focus of responsibility, we read a story together called "The Dot," and "The Dot" has really taken on a life of its own here at West Pots Grove Elementary School, in large part thanks to the efforts of our school librarian, Mrs. Matheny, and our school technology instructor, Mrs. Randall. I'll share a little bit more about that. But "The Dot" is a great story that we read together. I'm going to share with you in just a moment a student summary of what that book was all about and kind of how it grew from there. After we read the story together in the assembly, students in the library classes created their own dots, and that built, in their computer classes then created, so our second grade students used Microsoft Word and some of the tool functions that they've been learning in technology class to create their own dots as well, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Bickerett to pull up the video there, and our students will tell you a little bit more about what "The Dot" is all about. So we connected our story, "The Dot," to the character trait of responsibility by really sharing our own strengths, capitalizing on the strengths that we have and what we can share with others, and we've really been promoting that throughout the school. In just a moment, I'm going to, we're going to switch back to the PowerPoint which is going to show you. All of those dots that the students were created have been put together to create a mural wall in our building, and these photos, I have to give Mrs. Sisera, one of our teachers here, credit for taking these pictures and putting the collage together for us. I'm not sure it does it justice, this is right outside of our cafeteria, but it's just stunning to take a look at, and I'd really encourage you, if you have an opportunity, to pass down that hallway to take a look because it's really fantastic. Each of those dots represents, you know, how one of our students is helping the rest of our school and the rest of our school community. So I'm going to ask our second grade representatives to come up right now. They're going to just take a moment to tell you about what their dots represent, and then they're going to help us with asking you to continue that message in our school.
I will make my mark by helping others when they are sad.
I will make my mark by helping a friend.
I will make my mark by helping others.
I will make my mark by believing in other people.
So, we are going to ask one thing if you don't mind, taking a few moments to help us continue this initiative here at West Pots Grove Elementary School. I'd take a couple minutes out of your meeting time this evening to make a dot yourselves that we can add to our wall tomorrow during the school day. So all we're looking for is a dot that shares a few words of encouragement for our students that if they go ahead and they're traveling around the whole district.
So what you're going to do is you're going to take your piece of paper, and you're going to make yourself a dot. Some kids like to draw circles, some kids can cut it out as you go, and then you're going to use the person inside these straps to continue to create your dot. So you saw the examples up on the board where we used lots of different colors, where we used their markers, and their colored pencils. And when you look at your dot, when our kids look for their dots on the walls, they're remembering, it reminds them of that kids listen to kids and that all of things, they learn from other children and how they can teach other children to be a family as well. So we'd like to be able to do that.
Anything deserving, turn to me, I would really like to say.
Either, anything that you think would be helpful.
One for a...
If you wanted another color, there's paste in there. Multiple colors if you want it. That's good, boys and girls, that's perfect, they have plenty.
Thank you very much.
If you'd like to, you can, it's up to you. So we'll be adding these to our wall tomorrow, and we thank you for making your mark.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item five, approval of the minutes. The recommendation is to approve the monthly board minutes for September 10th as submitted.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the meeting of September 10th. Are there any questions on the minutes? No? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Five point two, we're asking the board to approve the monthly board action minutes for September 24th, 2019.
A motion and an okay. We need a second, though. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All right. All those opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Moving on to section six. Mr. Nestor, are you prepared to receive the accounts?
We'll need a motion to accept the high school accounts, the middle school accounts, and the cafeteria accounts as presented.
We have a motion and a second to receive the accounts for audit. Does anybody have any questions on this? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Thank you. We'll need a motion to approve the payment of invoices in the amount of $7,452,348.58 for September 2019.
We have a motion and a second to approve the payment of invoices for September. Does anybody have any questions on the granting of the orders? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Thank you. And we'll need a motion to approve the treasures report for September 2019 as presented and to file it for audit.
We have a motion and a second to approve the treasures report and file it for audit. Does anybody have any questions on the treasures report and the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. So order without objection. And now, report to the superintendent.
Moving on to the report of the superintendent, I'd like to call Brianna and Madison to give us the student board update.
Hello. Okay, so Maddie and I visited the middle school back in September to meet with a group of sixth and seventh and eighth graders. We asked them four questions. What does Pots Grove do great? What can Pots Grove do better? What do you dream Pots Grove can be? And what can you do personally to make Pots Grove a better place? So for the first question, what does Pots Grove do great? They said that they have fun pep rallies and assemblies, they like the SWBIS events, they have a great choir, and they like the plays and musicals, they have awesome technology, the school has a really good energy, they really appreciate the GSA club in which they feel safe and included. The food at lunch is very nice, they like the variety of encores that they have, the school does a good job of preventing bullying, they like the Brain Show, which is like a trivia show that they have, and they really like their teachers. For the second question, what can Pots Grove do better? They said that the lunch lines are messy and unorganized, there are too many people at one time. They said that they have to go to their homerooms before lunch, and that takes away from their lunchtime. They'd like to be able to choose their encores, they don't like that they have to walk in lines, they want to choose their seats at lunch, and they would like longer breaks between classes so that it's easier to get their own time.
For the third question, what can you do personally to make Pots Grove better? They said be kind, make sure you're being clean, as in the classrooms, lockers, hallways, and cafeteria, listen and pay attention, correct people not following directions, and help people who need it. For the last question, which is what do you dream Pots Grove can be? They said a place where everyone feels comfortable, a place where everybody's happy and nice, and a place that is full of opportunities for everybody. We also asked them about the languages that they're taking this year, and they told us that they're having a really good time in French and that their teacher is really nice. They like the idea of trying all three languages in one year to see which one they like best. They said it's really cool that they get to learn about what they're most interested in. For example, one student said she thought she wanted to learn Spanish, but now she's having such a good time in French that she would rather learn that. Brenna and I also had the opportunity to attend the Chamber of Commerce Breakfast event on Thursday the third.
I do have a question, I'm just curious. Usually when somebody says, "Oh, lunch was nice," like, was it really, like, they liked lunch, or was this being polite? It's just curious.
As in, like, the food, or like, the environment? They said they... Yes, they said the... They said that the food was nice, as in they like the food. I think the environment of the lunchroom is something that they have a bit of an issue with.
I don't see Mr. Boyer here, I'm curious. Oh, okay. How much time do the students have to eat? I'm concerned about these comments in regards to, and I'm not saying I have an issue with it, but they have to go to homeroom first and then go down there. I like the order that's been put in place with the cafeteria as far as walking and assigned seats and so forth. Discipline's important, it needs to be, needs to continue to be a priority, but do they have enough time to eat?
Yeah, they have a half hour, and if they don't finish their lunch, they can stay. So we don't, you know, we don't make anybody rush to, you know, finish their lunch and, you know, get out of the cafeteria, but, you know, they have a half hour and we try to have everybody in the lunch line with at least, you know, 21 minutes is what Mr. Kirby and I kind of have a rule as, so, you know, out and through and sitting down.
So it's a half hour after they get to the, once they get to the cafeteria?
Yeah, because the transition is involved and not the actual half hour lunch. So for example, the first lunchstone starts at 10:59, and they begin to come down around 10:54. Yeah, you're welcome.
The only other thing I wanted to mention was, obviously, you always hear a lot on social media and stuff about bullying and such, so I was very pleased to hear that overall the students were very happy with how the program is going and how the school's handling the bully situation.
Thank you, again. For the next month? Where are you headed next month? Did you decide yet?
I think we go to Rock's next month.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to action items for personnel.
I'd like to make a motion to combine 10.1 through 10.5.
We have a motion and a second to approve 10.1 through 10.5. Does anybody have any questions on 10.1 through 10.5? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Moving on to 10.6, supplemental and special payment appointments. We're asking the board to approve the supplemental and special payment appointments as submitted.
We have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any questions on the supplementals and special payment appointments?
Can we get information on what the events coordinator position covers in the elementary grade coordinator? Events coordinator and? Elementary grade. So events from the middle school and elementary grade at Ringing Rocks.
Please.
It's the person who, before we would have an assembly or any type of event music-wise, they organize what needs to get set up, the lighting part of things, the sound, you know, whatever kind of needs to be organized beforehand, and kind of communicate with me and then the custodian, so if we had an assembly at 9:30 and whatever the presenter wants, they're responsible to make sure those things are set up.
I don't know that you would know this, but do we know how long that position's been in place and who did these things before this? I've never heard of such a thing.
I'm going to defer, but I do believe that these aren't new. All the supplemental contracts that come before you as a board are part of that separate collective bargaining piece that is factored in and with the district and with the collective bargaining unit, so, and they're reviewed annually, so these pieces have been with us and part of our program at least, and I've been part of three review processes with that, I know Dr. Harney was through the last one, but these positions are, have not been new since, you know, I came in '14. So it's been on the books for quite a while. Sometimes they're not filled every year, I can say that, Mr. Parker. Sometimes they're filled, sometimes they're not, but Mr. Boyer, has this been something you've used over your tenure at the middle school?
Carol Bean had done it previously, and she retired, and we had a couple teachers that inquired about it, and I think Mr. Swigert is the one that's, and, you know, it also involves if we would have things in the gymnasium, you know, and like pep rally, we need stuff, so. So Carol had did it, I mean, as long as I've been there, which isn't very long, but she knew what, how to do everything in there.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. Go ahead.
That position's been in existence for at least twenty years. We do an annual review of all the directors at the end of the day, but that position has been there for over twenty years. Sometimes it hasn't been filled, this has been did fill it for, for those, for those years until her retirement this year. And the elementary piece is really organizing of all the elementary clubs. If you remember, a few years ago, we basically made each of the clubs to whatever the students' wishes were, or whatever the clubs that they wanted to run. So they all have the same number of clubs at each of the elementary schools, but they could change throughout the student's interest and the, and the teacher that runs those clubs, their expertise, whatever they wanted to run.
Point of affirmation. Why is this list separate from the list that we approved a few meetings ago?
It, they get approved at different times throughout the year. It's not, it's, it's really monthly. As, as things start to roll out throughout the school year, that's, that's why the issue. Anything else for Mr. Boyer or Mr. Drenson?
No, I'll be voting no, at least in regards, because of the events coordinator position. I'm not sure about the elementary grade, but we're voting for the list as a whole. I'll be voting no.
Are there any other questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
So that's five yeses, so that motion carries. On to section eleven, action items for business.
Thank you. At this time, our goal for eleven point one is to stay within the Act One Index. The motion recommendation from the administration is to adopt the resolution limiting the tax increase for the two thousand twenty-one school year to no more than the Act One Index for that, for that, for the year. At this point, that Act One Index is expected to be three point four percent.
Wow, took you a really long time. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt that resolution limiting the tax increase to no more than the Act One Index. Does anybody have any questions on that resolution?
Not a question, just a comment, just so the public understands that although this is just the Act One Index, we have no intention of actually getting to three point four. It will be much less. It's just going through the whole rigmarole of what we have to do. So I want to make sure everybody understands that that does watch the video, we are not going to go to three point four percent.
All right, very good. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right, moving on.
Moving on to budget transfers. We're asking the board to approve budget transfers for October two thousand nineteen as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to combine eleven point two, eleven point three.
Does anybody have any, do you have an issue with eleven point three?
Cancel my motion.
Would anybody care to make a motion on eleven point two? We have a motion on eleven point two to do the budget transfers. Does anybody have any questions on eleven point two? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection. Eleven point three, confidential settlement agreement for one student.
Our recommendation is to approve a confidential settlement agreement for one student.
We have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any questions on this?
I'll be abstaining due to not having enough information.
Does anybody have any other questions or issues? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
Abstain.
And we have one abstention, so five, five oh one, motion carries. On to action items for education.
For twelve point round, the conference attendance for student assistance, we're asking the board to approve the conference attendance as submitted.
That was what, twelve one?
Yes, sir.
Just twelve one. Okay, so, so are there any questions on twelve one? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection.
Moving on to twelve point two, we're asking a recommendation and asking the board to approve the conference attendance item as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the A-Cappa Fall Conference. Anybody have any questions on this one? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection. Committee items.
Moving to committee items, we're asking the board of thirteen point one to accept the minutes from the Operations Facilities Committee that was held on September tenth, two thousand nineteen, as submitted.
Men the motion to include thirteen point one through thirteen point three.
Just thirteen point three?
Yeah, because it's the, these are all meetings, minutes.
Oh, it's a draft. Okay, gotcha. All right, very good. So we have a motion and a second for thirteen one to thirteen three. Does anybody have any questions on those? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
Moving on to thirteen point four, the Policy Committee, which met on September twenty-fourth. We're asking that committee chair, Mr. Parker, to report.
We began the meeting discussing some new technology we had heard of that the IUs have access to through grants, through, I believe, state funds, where they actually bring in robot, robots into the classrooms, sort of speak. It's an iPad on, on a rolling machine that students that are homebound or for whatever reason unable to be home can access from home. And others in the classroom see the student, you know, from home, and the student can see and hear others. To my, to my somewhat surprise, but not too much of a surprise, as Ms. Pacito's always on top of things, we already have this in place, so very happy to hear. I forget exactly how many we are borrowing from the IU. So this is technology that is occurring to the benefit of, of all. So we discussed the need for an additional, a separate or changes to current policies, and that is something that the administration's reviewing at this time and will get back to us in the future. We then went on to discuss borrowed equipment. A question was raised in, I believe, our last board meeting, whether we should have a policy again or an amended policy to cover times where we borrow or loan equipment from others. Dr. Had, Dr. Harney had researched that, didn't find any precedent. Based on that and our solicitors' comments during the board meeting, the committee felt that wasn't necessary. We then looked at seven eighteen point two, service animals. This is a pretty cookie cutter policy that came from PSBA. Service animals, as we know, are regulated by ADA, and we didn't make any changes to that policy that had already been reviewed and approved through other legal resources. So we moved that on for a thirty-day review, and that should be up, I guess, at the next meeting for vote. We then continued our discussion on seven eighteen point one, therapy dogs, which would be a new policy. We reviewed a, a policy that Dr. Harney had found through board docs. I don't recall right now which district it was, and we, we talked about a couple, a couple issues as much as time allowed us to have. The committee felt there needed to be more specificity to it. So Dr. Harney's doing more research, I believe already has been in contact with a school in Chester Canyon who's making use of this. Definitely a trend in schools that's happening, especially with the focus on being trauma-informed. So we'll be taking our time with that, making sure we, we do it right, and what needs to be in place is in place. Any questions on those? That's it.
All right, just a quick question on that robot part. When you say homebound student, are we talking about someone that is permanently homebound? Or could a student that has a habitual medical condition that happens to not be able to attend class, for whatever reason, call the school and say, hey, can we use the technology if it's available?
Right. This is, homebound and homeschooled are two different things. So this would be a student that's enrolled in our school but is out for whatever period of time. It's not for homeschooled students, homebound students. So they're, we're required to provide instruction to them in some form. Historically, it's been, you know, send a teacher for a couple hours after school to kind of catch them up. This, use of this technology, and Kate can correct me if, or add anything to this, but lets a student see the full picture live and stay up with where the class is.
Yeah, I was supposed to say, like, say, for example, though, I have a son, and my son happens to suffer from severe migraines, which is causing him to miss more school than he should. Could I turn around and say, hey, look, I'm going to call the school, high school, middle school, whatever it may be, and say, is the technology available because he's not going to be able to make it today? Could they do that on a daily basis, or is it mainly this?
There's a distinction between calling in ill if you're sick, so to speak, and you have a, an illness, as opposed to homebound. You have to qualify for homebound, and so I'm sure that Dr. Harney could educate you more than I, but there's a distinction.
Probably Dr. Shirk could add to it. Minimize your...
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Moving on to item fourteen, new business. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Nestor, if I could, to, uh, Mr. Binger. Would you like to?
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely. We had some conversation at our facilities meeting that we wanted to share with the board at this time.
Thank you. At our last meeting of the Facilities Committee, and in your minutes for the policy, or for the Facility Committee meeting, we, we reviewed three new programs that we think we want to add sooner rather than later. One was some, some repairs and upgrades to our theatrical rigging systems in our buildings. We had a report on, received on them that they are not in any danger right now, but they're in need of repair and upgrading. We also had a report that we could, we could retain our current boilers in our buildings, extend their life somewhat, but we needed to replace the burners inside the boilers. And the third thing, third item was improvements to the fire, fire control panel at the middle school. The three of those programs that we talked about at our last meeting were three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, and we're looking to move them forward at our next meeting for approval. In addition to that, we spoke about one additional large item and some, some minor upgrades that we need to make to some existing information that we'd like to get on there as well. The first, the large item is a, a network infrastructure upgrade, and if you want more information on that, I'm going to defer to Tony. But the, the price tag on that is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's network switches, and I'm not sure exactly what all the, the background on that is, but Tony will be able to answer that. We need some minor upgraded information on the, we had approved for this year the installation of dugouts at our baseball field. However, due to Title IX, we, if we're going to put dugouts in our, at our baseball field, we also have to put them in at our softball, Farsley Softball Field. So we're looking for a twenty-one thousand dollar increase to the number that was budgeted for the, for the dugouts. And in addition, another somewhat technology, somewhat facility request was the installation of fiber connections within West Pots Grove Elementary School and Lower Pots Grove Elementary School to aid the transfer data primarily, one of the main driving factors is the addition of all the cameras that we're putting in. It's, it's slowing our internal communications. So we're looking for eleven thousand dollars to outfit the, the network within West Pots Grove and Lower Pots Grove total. So in total, the, the new programs that we talked about tonight were another three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So we're looking at a total of seven, what was the number I gave you there? Seven hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars that we're looking to put forward as capital, additional capital projects at our next meeting for approval. Any questions?
From a financial aspect, what's your opinion on, on, on that based on what you've projected for, you know, what's going to be used from the capital fund?
They're, they're all things that need to be addressed. I think if we don't do them now, we're going to be doing them in a year or two anyway. These things seem to be needed at this point in time, and we do have the money available at this point in time. One of the, one of the projects that was proposed for the current year has been completed, and because we didn't have to replace all the contacts in the HVAC system at lower, our bid, our projected price of two hundred and fifty thousand roughly dollars was significantly high, and we, I think we generated a two hundred and six thousand dollar savings, if you will. We only had to replace the controller. We didn't have to replace all the contacts, so we didn't invest as much there. So, so we had some savings this year on some of the things that were completed, so that that will contribute to the, to the cost of these items as well.
Wasn't the high school auditorium just redone? Was the rigging and, and curtains not part of that?
Did any, I mean, normally I would ask this next question, but it's not up for vote today, but did anybody on the Facility Committee have any questions or issues with this being added at the next board meeting and then obviously going forward with our five and ten-year plan, making sure we have enough capital resources available?
That's kind of where this came from. That, this is what we're trying to, to get to, is, is making sure that we're looking at what's coming down the road and what the spend is like. This, we've, we've got sort of the five-year plan in place, and we're looking at where the, the hills and the valleys are, and the, we're, right now, the, the ten-year plan only goes out to twenty, twenty twenty-five. And there's a couple of, yeah, there's a couple of valleys in there, and we don't have, it's not a uniform spending plan right now, and it only goes, as I said, out to twenty twenty-five. So we want to look at these things, like the, the stage issue. We, we found the, there was an inspection done. We found these things that, that needed to be replaced and fixed now, addressed now. The burners are something that is a, is an issue. We kind of went over that at the last meeting of the, what was, what was driving that? The fire control issue, again, you know, the software's sort of outdated, and there's, all the stuff isn't theirs. We're, we're looking at that.
It's been new stuff.
Right. So, right, so that's what, that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to get out of it so we have a, a uniform of, we don't have the hills and valleys like we did. We're looking at the lifecycle costs. We know when the roofs are going to come due, and we, we want to put those big markers out there so we know that we've got the money available for them. But then there's other known costs that we have to plan for too, so that's what we're trying to do now, is put that ten-year plan out there and, and start planning for it now, because nobody likes to get the, the big bills and not have it planned for. So that's what we're working on in the next little bit. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, for the October 22nd meeting, we'll have a, we'll have the opportunity to have an action item on the, for the board. If, as you had an opportunity, I don't think the entire board, I guess it will be on board docs, the spreadsheet that we gave the facilities committee.
It will be. So, the full board will have the opportunity to review those expenditures, not only for this year and a couple of the extra pieces, but as well as moving forward out to 24, 25. So, please, please take a look at that as, as you, as we move forward with that piece as well.
So, can I ask one, one question? I, I think I just missed something. So, the committee is still looking at and, and planning for the ten-year plan, so why are we talking about voting on this next week until that full plan is complete?
These are pieces that we felt needed immediate attention, not, not really tied in with the, with the ten-year plan, but because of some of the information we, we have occurred in the last really six months, and since, since June, we felt that this was a, this was a good time to keep, keep it going as far as the facilities go.
Does anybody else have any issues for new business?
Yeah, so at the Tri-County breakfast thing we were at, something came up briefly that Hempfield School District, I guess, just, just did, they changed all their diesel buses to propane buses, which was a new thing to me. And it really stuck out to me. They, they said, you know, they went from $2.80 a gallon for diesel to 75 cents a gallon for propane. Now, but they didn't share what the cost was to transfer, you know, that one engine to the other. Is this something we've have researched in the past? I wonder if it would be beneficial to research. I highly doubt it would be worth, you know, just switching everything boom in one shot, but as we bring on new buses, is this something that we want to see if it's really worth, you know, I mean, when I hear $2.80 to 75 cents, I mean, that, that's pretty huge, but I don't know what one bus costs compared to the other either. Is that something we could research for as we bring new buses in?
We can certainly try and get some, some, some information. The biggest, there's a couple of big components. One is you need to build a separate fueling facility, which is buying land and building facility, a lot of, lot of infrastructure costs. The second was propane. I think I have, because there's a couple of different scenarios. One's compressed natural gas, one's propane. One of them requires the, the repair facility to be retrofitted so that there's appropriate ventilation in, in the facility, which could be some additional information. But I, I can try and put together some, some general information for you. Might not be right away, but they're cleaner, but I, I'm also of the understanding that they may not have the durability because they don't have the lubricants in it that an oil engine would have.
If you, you may very well have a contact there, just so you know. We do represent Hempfield, so we can make an introduction if you have trouble getting through for some reason.
I did have one little piece that I'm sure everybody in the board got, the email, and it was an item that we discussed a little bit last month, last board meeting as and two, about all the different features we have with the map and all the PSSAs, and everybody's always worried about all the different little pieces that we have, and are we testing our kids too much, and are we doing all different things? In that email, though, I do want to point out, and of course, the curriculum committee, obviously, we'll go over it at nauseam probably at the next meeting, but the results came back for our students for last year, and I want to say thank you very much to the administrators, the teachers, and everybody up and down the chart. When you guys see the numbers out in the public, you'll see that virtually every one of our classes this year is going to be above the state average. In fact, we actually scored the best we have since the new changeover in all the fourth grade, the sixth grade, the seventh grade, and the eighth grade in math, I'm sorry, in English, and the third, fourth, and eighth grade in mathematics, and the fourth and eighth in science. So, in essence, almost every grade scored better than they've ever done before, and that's all accounted towards using all those programs, using those pieces, the map testing, the different forms that we've used, the curriculum that we've changed. Everything is showing that that's getting the improvement that we're looking for. We're not perfect yet, obviously. It's not like everywhere at 100%, but we're better than we've ever been before in almost every single class. So, I have to commend everybody that's been involved in that.
I hope nobody else has anything to say, because I want to go out on a high note.
Well, before you do that, then.
Oh, man.
Let me just say, I don't want, you know, gym-leading cheers over here, but I may miss the next meeting, and one of my colleagues will be here because of a conflict.
So, don't get too excited.
So, that is good news. That counts. All right.
We'll take that.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything else? That being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Have a good evening, everyone.